Place.
Pretty cool. You can see the switchbacks and all over the song. Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah. All right. Bring this meeting order.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to review this extended agenda?
Yes.
All right. If we have any, uh, we have any, uh, conflicts of interest? Not entertained motion to approve the agenda as it's posted.
So moved.
Second.
Getting moved by Mr. Dozark, signed by Ms. Hayden. All in favor of states, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
No. Careful time. Motion carried. Reading of the minutes, Madam Auditor, could you apply just please?
August twenty nine, twenty twenty three. The Board of Supervisors met at nine a.m. with Ty Rosberg, Chairman presiding. Members present were Dozark, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Member absent was Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. Just a statement, not. The Board approved the resignation of Jocelyn Ramos, Naturalist, Intern, Conservation Department. The Board approved the hiring of Sarah Schmidt, PRN, Dental Hygienist, Public Health. Brittany Ruba, FEH Design spoke via Zoom to the Board about the needed adjustment to the, to continue with the demo and completion of the restroom remodel. A motion was made by Mulbauer, signed by Hayden to approve the proposal request to second order or change order to the first floor restroom remodel in the amount of five thousand eight dollars. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due second, the Board adjourned at ten forty four a.m. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty a.m. Proceeding the next meeting. Same day, a little later in the day, the Board of Supervisors met at Manila, the Manila Shop with the County Engineer, Paul Osman, County Auditor Terry Martins, and members of the Manila Public Works. Members present were Hayden, Rosberg, and Mulbauer.
Great. I got her. All right. Uh, is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, uh, there'll, no objections to those minutes. I'll stand approved as read.
How did that go? Really swaps here out later?
Yeah, we did. Actually, it's gonna work out pretty good, I think. And save us some money and them some money as well.
We're not have to tear down our old building.
They won't. They won't. Perfect.
Probably be working together.
Amazing when people have these garments out together.
That create a bust over every little thing.
It makes sense and it looks like the only problem is to take down some trees. And with all the trees we've had to take down because of the disease and we have nice healthy trees. I'd take them out, but it is what it is.
I think you're gonna have a better access.
I think so too.
For some ice.
I think it'll be pretty nice. I think, period. You wanna look it up? There's not much.
We plant trees for granted.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Well, not really.
Okay. Ms. Hayden, would you like to start off our supervisory report?
We can do that. Wednesday, uh, was my, uh, day when I have a meeting at nine o'clock with the DCAT. And that, the funding they were concerned with that wasn't going to be what it was in previous years. But, uh, this year so far, we're doing okay. That's usually a pretty short meeting, uh, but it lasted till my next meeting started at ten. Uh, we had to kind of wrap it up because most of us, uh, that meeting also had a lot of notes of, we reviewed the policy and procedures. And it was in action if we wanted to change anything. So we do use our policies and procedures as the rule of how we run that organization. We had twenty-three thousand in left, in carryover funds, and so we're working to spend those down, which is unusual. We have two vacancies in Crawford County, and I, this was, you have to remember, a week ago. Can't remember what that was about, but I'm gonna have to follow up and find out. I think I said I was gonna follow up on that, so forget I even mentioned that one. And then we went on at, uh, two thirty to my, uh, Board of Health. I decided, you know, for public mental health. And that was the shortest, uh, mental health meeting I've ever attended. I attended it soon because it was in Storm Lake, and they were going to have the first thirty minutes of their closed session to discuss, and I believe it was gonna be Dawn's.
So if you're a voter, you can't sit in that.
So, but it was very.
What?
Dawn's review.
That is amazing. Even though they take voting says you're supposed to be an advisor, advise on her evaluation.
So it was short. It actually was a short meeting. Um, I could see not well attended. You know, we used to be take up that hole and, uh, you know, I, it was very short, cut through, and, uh, Sandy Louie did go in person and to call me afterwards. And so it is what it is. But they do have, uh, G minors from Carroll, who is their alternate, sit in the meetings. They, I didn't even realize you could pick an alternate. So the supervisors are, uh, and I, I really was trying to figure out if that board's still gender balanced. But, uh, it's all supervisors are, I, uh, but it's okay. So it was short. That's pretty much it. Uh, it really, there's nothing, nothing to see there, nothing to report for that. But I did sit through, uh, my entire day was sitting through meetings on Wednesday via Zoom. And, uh, things are going okay. Uh, for DCAT, we're a little bit concerned if funding wasn't gonna be there, but she was managing to keep everything flowing and, uh, I think they did a good job.
They still need nobody going?
Yes. Nobody going. It's a policy. That's my agenda. Uh, still, I, I did talk to Jamie Cashman this morning about some issues, and, uh, he's gonna get back to me, so that kind of go on a little bit. Basically, just trying to figure out how we can, uh, have any rule if we don't have any rules. If we have policies, but we don't have to pay any attention to them. I just kind of how, how that can be correct, and I'll continue to figure out how that, how it, how we can just say that the policy manual isn't anything that we have to adhere to, that it's just. I, I don't know how we go forward if that's what that, uh, is. So I'm gonna continue to find out till I can get the real answer, uh, for how this is gonna play out. Uh, cause the other thing that I worry about is those, that time where a department head, you know, took the time out of vacation time, doing a bit over to sick time, and we kind of said, oh, no, the board has to, if you're gonna go outside of policy, I believe at their minimum is your board, whoever controls it, needs to be aware and agree that you're going outside of policy. I just, that's, that's the only way to not have anarchy in government position.
There's no point in the boards if you don't.
That's exactly right. And I just, I'm just not satisfied with accepting that if you're, and I'm, I'm not even discussing elected officials. That's a different, different apple here. I'm eating my banana, but the department head is appointed to run the day-to-day, you know, business of the government, but there is a guideline that you need to listen to. And if you decide to go outside of that guideline, you need to get the approval. I haven't heard it from an attorney, but I'm, I'm not just accepting that we don't have to obey our policy manual. Cause even with my, um, uh, child care, we had to review the policies, look at them and make decisions whether we wanted to keep them the same or change them or add different things. And once, why bring them up to us if Annette could do as she pleases? I, she, she believes that the board needs to know what's, what's going on, and, uh, I agree with that. So spend a little bit of time doing that. Um, try to get ahold of a government official, uh, in Des Moines on Friday, four, three-day holiday. I did get ahold of some people this morning.
Well, we even used the excuse of our phone lines didn't work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's okay, but just.
How long before we think we need to change over to that internet phone system? Boy, if we can't get these phones, I mean, uh, this is getting pretty regular.
It is. It could be really bad.
What was the company we were looking at that Public Health uses? We had talked on our IT meeting. I can't think of it off the top of my head either, but.
Well, he's got Public Health on.
Yeah.
I think he's trying to schedule another meeting to.
I thought they said that worked very well for them over there, that they've had a good.
This is getting old news. I mean, we're gonna have citizens or start to jump down our throats.
We did last time. We had, uh, how many that were subpoenas for jury duty? That's a night try calling, couldn't call in. I mean, I don't wanna get in trouble for not being able to make contact.
People kind of wondering if the courthouse is closed. Yeah. The other good news that I do have is we, as the, uh, Public Board of Health, did get our, uh, RFP, uh, the motion. We, we had a, uh, we were trying to have a Zoom meeting, but once again Doug's out of ballgame. And so we did a vote. Karen sent out a, uh, question that Doug had sent to her. Cause I, everybody had a chance to look at the RFP as presented, took it to Tim, took it out to the hospital. Libby and Marcy looked at it, took it down to Doug. They all had a chance to review it, look at it. And then we put out a vote to approve having it publicized. And so at that point, we couldn't put it on our Facebook page.
Oh, we should be able to just put it on our Facebook.
I would appreciate if we would do that, that can do help there, you know, on location and then, uh, cause we really wanna get that outside stuff done. So in that was the, the nice concrete, uh, elevations and everything that falls off is good for us. We put out a painting and we put out the windows and windows so that the outside things can all get done. And we made a decision that the generator will be natural gas. We just decided that that's the best way to go. Don't have to worry about the outside sources of jelling up, uh, diesel getting old and having propane tanks set around. And just natural gas is right there. If, uh, if it's so bad that the nat, natural gas pipelines exploded, the girls need to all go home and we take our vaccine out to the hospital because everything within this block.
Our station with a natural gas deal, there was a, a long-term problem. You can switch an orifice in there, put an LP tank out there, and we back up front.
Yeah. So that we kind of talked about that. So I've been trying to get ahold of Jake to let him know a lot of the, but I haven't been able to.
So the RFP is out there now?
It has been authorized to be published. And so, uh, I'll send you.
Should be in, it should be in hopefully this newspaper.
Okay, yeah.
If she got it there by the thirty-first, which was Thursday.
She did. Yep.
So it should be in, uh, whatever Thursday.
You have no idea how long you have to wait to see somebody at the hospital. He knew I was coming. I traded tax. He said he had to work till three, so I was down there at two thirty. The girl said he had left. I said, well, I just talked to him. He said he's still here. They had to try to find him. They had told the girls to send me back, but they never came back and told me to come back. So I felt like I was waiting for a dental appointment. My teeth started hurting. I was thinking about it. Why do people call me?
It is like, no, just chatting. I love when he's working on your teeth and he's asking you questions.
Yeah, no kidding.
Your hands are my mom's Lord hamster.
He had a chance to look at.
I wonder if they got, they, they teach, uh, foreign language with dental school.
Oh, he likes to do that. So I feel good about that. Everything that's on the outside should be able to be taken care of before the weather gets bad, so for what's that's out there. So I feel like we made great strides on that. Thanks to Paul's group, because that was awesome. So that's what I get all week.
They get it. And then what's keeping them from moving in the upstairs?
Painting. Painting. Yeah. Uh, and well.
Pretty sure we painted this whole building and then I lost a day of work.
I, I'm going, but we're amazing, so.
Amazing.
No wonder you gotta bring that up. It's something that could be done.
Definitely could.
It definitely could. Um, the good news is, is that. The, and, and what I'll do when we get done here is I'll call and have that added to our agenda. And, uh, and talk about that and have the board. I think the board feels a little bit more empowered at this point in time.
Kind of helping them.
I don't know.
I guess I'm, I'm tired of getting phone calls from the city telling us we need to buy Boulder's Conference Center. Yeah. And, and they'll, they'll take over that building. And I keep telling, I don't want not to do it, Boulder's Conference Center.
Yeah.
These are the only people that need to have anything with Boulder's Conference Center. It's the, in my eyes, the country club or Boulder's Hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. See, I don't think they'd appreciate we moved Sammy Rhodes out here. I've started moving equipment and rocking.
I will also say that I spent my week getting ready for my bands coming into town because I won't be home until Wednesday, and the bands are rolling in on Friday. So I had to take all of my grocery list out to the liquor store and tell what we needed. And then I had to go out to sell the.
So most people go to the grocery store with their grocery list. You go to the liquor store.
For the bands, for the bands. I know you.
Is that this weekend?
Next weekend. Next weekend. But I'll be in New York all week. And so.
What are you leaving for New York?
This coming. Oh, oh, God.
And so.
Oh, I was thinking it was.
If I could back out, I would, but.
That's right. I don't get my eye.
I'm seeing this little trip to Pecos after.
Well, the week before, but I'll be, I'll be pretty good. I can actually see really good almost immediately after they operate.
Really?
Yeah. I actually went in there and they did an eye test on me. I got the little, the little nurse that goes, she goes, she says, look at that board up there. She said, cover your left eye. So I did. She says, read the smallest line possible. I said, Acme Sign Company. And she got up and goes over to look at this. No, I'm screwing with you. But I could read all the, she went clear down to where I was. And they said that I have a fog in there yet because there'd be, you know, air in between the lens and stuff, and it was, uh, I'll, you know, have a little bubble or something is what it said. And he said, you won't see, probably won't have great vision right away. But God, I did. It was really.
The rise is amazing. They can heal itself a little bit.
You know what I, I would have to say, I was wor, you know, worried about a lot of discomfort or anything, you know, you're kind of, you know, you, you have a speck in your eye. It drives you nuts, you know, so I'm worried about it. And, and I, I could, I couldn't really tell when they flipped it over other than my view changed immediately. And I was just gobbledegoo got there, you know? And you could see shadows moving around, but that was about it. But, you know, you were listening, had the doctor and then the, uh, person that's his, uh, well, he's a resident, but he's, it's a train hospital. It's MEA hospital. So, I mean, they were, they were discussing all they were doing, you know, and I'm just like, oh, God, sounds like they're getting ready to overhaul an engine. Maybe sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. The, only, the good news of the day, we'll leave it with that, is that, uh, Chris Polly out at Boulder's is gonna take care of my breakfast, lunch, and dinner for my band. So it just so turns out that they're actually staying out there. And so he's going to allow the headliner who wanted their own green room, which.
They do that to you every year.
Well, they, this is the second year. It used to be they, everybody could get along nicely in the sandbox. But I, uh, they just better be darn good when you want your own green room, you know? But Chris has agreed to set up family style for both bands, kind of some beef tips, uh, chicken breast, salad, two vegetables, and cheesecake. And then we'll do the seven o'clock band out there. They go back to Aaron's because I use Aaron's, um, Pilates for my green room. And I'm nervous because, um, we don't have Evan and we don't have Shani, uh, and Mariah's working a tail off. The new guy, Jerry and I both been up there twice to make sure that they have, uh, the light guys ready to go, the generator, everything ready to go. And I'm nervous about getting back on Wednesday. And, uh, I've stopped in three times to see if we could cut up the tickets because they, they go intense. And we used to sit there for hours and get those.
So they have the ticket check?
Last time.
I think we got a meeting this week.
Well.
The board does.
Make sure that those tickets are cut up. Make sure that they have.
There's check. They need to not wait till the last minute to do it.
Exactly right. Uh, the thing that went wrong last year is nobody had printed the checks for the bands. Somehow they thought they could pay them after they were done. They don't go on without their check. I had to run around if by two people decided, sign a check.
Now checks for the band.
Checks for the band signed.
Signed checks.
And delivered hopefully for the band because if the road manager comes and says.
If they don't go on, are you the backup?
I could be.
You got hot checks ready to go?
I, I haven't heard anything about it. Fundraising. I haven't heard anything about where we're at with it. But, you know, we've got six rooms for the Friday night people. That's six rooms. And then the light people come in, they have to be fed. Yeah, so I will hit the ground running when I get back, and I do not believe it'll be a very relaxing weekend because my phone will ring the whole time I'm gone. The girls will take it away from me at some point in time.
You'll stress all by yourself, so we just won't give you something to do.
They sometimes tell them to just go without me, I have to stay back. And, uh, but it's okay. Anyways, that's pretty much it. It seemed like the week went by really fast. And then I get back and I have this to call this guy. He thinks I work here. You should, good eye though, Todd. But I'll call him. Just wanted to talk to Sherri and see if she's found out about, uh, and that's all over three hundred dollars.
Okay.
So that's my week.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Mulbauer.
Sure. Um, let's see. I started, I talked to Kyle a little bit about, um, Mark Sibber, Sigebert grabbed me. Pioneer evenings, and was wondering about. Right. He's biased.
You think?
Wondering about, um, a fire ban or potential fire ban as we progress to the harvest and as dry as it is. And you talked to Greg.
I talked to Greg. He was gonna reach out to the chiefs in the county. Just concerning what this drive has been, I mean, that humidity be clear or not, is a lot to do with fire spread. So low humidity and hot temperatures. It's just, it's just setting up to be.
And you're starting to get a breeze. We're getting our fall breezes to show up.
Starting to be a.
Right.
An issue and concerning of, you know, we haven't even started harvesting like all the crops. So then the last week it just dried down immensely.
And our departments, our, our, our departments, our chiefs, Craig, uh, I mean, they've always seemed like they're prepared and on top of things and know what's coming and.
So he was gonna work on that. Nobody had a hold of stuff.
No, no, you're.
Who was gonna work on that?
Greg.
Greg. Yeah.
And if we ever get to the point where we, if during a fire ban, put something out to farmers to be prepared with the disc?
I wouldn't hurt maybe to put something out with paper, but. Most of them, I know my contingency plan is we don't need to rain, there'd be a tractor with this sitting in the field. Every time you're that trash and this, you know. It's not for me, it's for the neighbors. It's not, you know.
You know, sometimes if you're not ready to go dig that disc out of a shed and.
Right.
You know, by the time you get hooked up, even if it's an hour or two.
A lot of fires moved, especially since Wendy did.
Right. That's what saved us last fall. We had John Road.
Yes.
Twenty tractors and this show up.
Yeah.
That was a bad one.
You can stop a lot of fire fast.
And I, we've been there too. I bet we've had our share of fires at the feedlot. It's just, they happen. Try to be prepared. The type of work, but. Other thing, Region Twelve is having their fiftieth anniversary on the seventh, Temple Ten. We are also having all our meetings ahead of that near noon. Anybody that's wanting to go, you know.
It's wet day again.
Seventh, Thursday.
So do they want regrets or just, uh, like, I know we're coming, so I don't get that.
No, if you're not coming, they just want people to honestly be supportive.
No, that's this one.
It's this coming Thursday. And today's the fifth, so. The other thing, Greg and I talked about this morning. Next Wednesday is our, I was about seven eighteen. Planning on going to, Terry's gonna be there as well. I'll be good to kind of find out what, how this is gonna affect us, our budgets going forward. And feeling like it is not, this is my own personal opinion, not going to be good for revenue. Like, well, it's how, how much will it affect them? I think it'd be good to see, see what they have to say. I know Jamie and Lucas have been working hard at ISAC to kind of dig into what it all means and what it's going to do to our budgets.
You know, we were, we're already below three point five or at three point five on our.
Yeah.
General.
Three ninety-five.
And three ninety-five on rural. So I, I, I don't, although that's gonna kick us in the butt as much as, you know, the, uh, veterans and seniors deal plus the, uh.
Just, yeah, loss revenue.
Them exemptions and, and then if valuations make us have to adjust levies, I mean, then that might have to be, or we're. But otherwise, I, I don't know. We, we, you know, hopefully we're gonna be.
Well, and then, you know, the other thing, not only to me, that is gonna affect us, but we've been through it in the past as well. We could go through, I mean, we've been at all-time highs for housing market. We've had good corn and bean prices. Land price has been holding steady, but now that interest rates are going up. And we could see a pullback in these markets that affect our assessed values almost, or the other way.
Oh, you're, you're not wrong.
Yeah. You know, even with our five-year rolling average, it won't take very long before lower prices start to affect that.
You're right. Would you say that those credits are called unfunded state mandates?
Absolutely. All by far.
Yeah.
They spent so much time at ISAC, this panel, trying to explain their formulas and how, you know, I don't know how they expect the average person to really follow.
Because I thought it's in Iowa code. I thought I read that, that this counties can request money from the state if you get, if they enact a unfunded mandate to counties. Is that accurate?
Where's that money from?
Yes and no. We had this discussion at District Three meeting one year and talked with Bill and, and those guys at ISAC. It's, uh, twenty-five B or C or something in the code, but they have it where they have notwithstanding and withstanding. Remember some of this? And if they write it with the terminology in there, like notwithstanding unfunded mandates, we don't get applied for unfunded mandates.
Gotcha.
So it's kind of a loophole around it.
So if you word it as not an unfunded mandate, even though it is an unfunded mandate, then they don't have to break.
Right.
So they have to make sure they have that one word in there to.
Gotcha.
Yeah. That's what it come down to was those, that verbiage of withstanding or not withstanding and funded, or it's, and it skates right around it.
And there's no backfill basically.
And then, they, you know, they changed, and that, this is part of what I hope we'll, we'll talk about. To go over the three fifty or the three ninety-five, there was like a list of four or five different things, a natural disaster, of whatever that you could apply for to, to go over. And then, and I think they've gotten rid of all of them except natural disaster.
Yeah, I think OCLO, I was sitting at that.
Yeah, with Jason.
When I took the, uh, truck down there for the fire thing, that what, one of the firemen that were down there was supervisor down there. And he was actually talking about how they did there because they went over three, three and a half. And, uh, I can't remember how he said it, what, what he used for the reasoning, but it was some expenditure on something that was, you know, kind of a last-minute thing or what. I don't remember how he worded it, but he said it was in there and he said they, it sounded like they were gonna take those types of things away. He was worried about that. Can't remember for sure which, but.
Well, I thought it was clever that OCLO, Jason Van Hoff said that they requested to go above the three fifty and they cut taxes back or elsewhere, but they requested to go above three fifty. So it's a net wash. They weren't actually raising taxes to make the point to the state, we're raising it because of unfunded mandates that you're handing to us.
Exactly. In the years you're cutting tack, or cutting our revenues, then you're handing us more, more, more basic, unfunded mandates. Yeah, great point.
But, uh, hopefully we get some good information out of that meeting.
So did you register online?
Did. You can go to ISAC's calendar.
Cause I see it's past online registration.
If you.
I set up a note to say.
They're good about.
Yeah, this call.
This can eat.
Katie Cook.
Get ahold of Katie. She'll get you in.
They have too, uh, all their phone numbers and emails of all the employees on it. So if we don't hear nothing back, I'd look up Katie Cook's. And just email her or give her a call and she'll get you right in. And just email her or give her a call and she'll get you right in.
I even when I can't remember my cloud.
Okay, yes. Um, the other thing which we were kind of discussed was the Manala meeting with the city guys, county council. I thought that one really went off the. They'll probably send you an email with your invoice.
I think that was it.
You can forward it to me or.
And it looked like Paul and Sean were real happy with the outcome and.
So we, we decided to sell the city?
Well.
Of Manala.
Our building and the property that it sits on, we're swapping with the public utilities down there and then there's a lot that they purchased, must have been like years ago because they wanted to clean it up. And it's probably equal or even maybe a little bigger. I thought it looked a little bigger actually. But it's hard to tell when you got a building sitting on a lot that makes that look smaller, so it might be pretty close to equal. Paul's gonna kind of look everything up, but just switch one for one and then we don't have to tear down a building, which is what we were gonna do. So we're gonna move our.
Build the new building and this new lot?
Well, it'll be further. It won't be all, all the way over, but we'll move it further and then basically the sand and gravel pit will be moved over between these two buildings, kind of more out of sight, out of mind.
So we won't have to do anything with the culvert? I mean, the one that before, we were gonna have to do something with how the ditches.
Well, we still will have to do something with that.
Yeah.
Um, actually, what to me sounds like a, not a bad idea. They talked about, they put the tile through there and filling that in, so you have road access for a best stretch. And, and the way it wraps around the street too, I think we should have better access for getting semis in. There's a kind of a sharp bend. You got your street, this one kind of comes around like that.
Kind of curves.
Where now, there's some trees here that would come in, possibly come right in and loop into this area where our new shed will be.
There's some dirt that's gonna need.
It sounded like the fuel barrels might be here or was he still gonna try to put them in between? I thought it was gonna move.
He was gonna move over here and then.
Have the fuel.
And then the old shed would be in here. And it'll be up to you.
But Sean didn't have any problem because there's kind of a dip. They're gonna have to bring some dirt in.
Yeah, we can run all that water to this outlet right there and still have road access all along here. Maybe even have a lane over here that's, you know, not to make such a sharp bend in. But I think it's gonna work. City guys seem very happy about it.
Then instead of taking that building off, they're just gonna put some of the stuff that's set out that kind of makes it look a little tacky, they're gonna just put that, that building, uh, just kind of like a story or something.
I think Sean and Paul were very happy with.
Sean and Paul seemed real happy about it.
Yep, I thought they uh, I expected.
With the public utilities. And they must have something like DMUs.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, similar.
Similar setup. Such out with their public utility.
I think they're.
They're gonna store all their, their panel or the boxes, you know, the, and then the things that go up on the pole, you know, your transformers and all that. They wanted to put that in that small part of the building and and they had some future plans for some kind of generation system, maybe, and different things they were working on. So, yeah, it seemed like it was a good deal. I mean, we don't have to pay to tear down a building.
We don't have to pay to tear down a building. They don't have to pay to build one.
Yeah.
I mean.
And we have better access. It's made sense to me.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna be very happy with the outcome.
But it seemed like we've had good working relationships with getting that other lot bought out by our gravel pile and this is a good swap that helps both entities. Just nice to see government work together.
Yeah, true. Certainly is. Anything else for?
Uh, that's all I got.
All right, Mr. Dozar.
Oh, I don't really have anything. I guess I'll, um, let everyone be aware that with the, and I sent Babe this information, but as far as the twenty-eight E with the Children's Imagination Station. And they ran out a portion of that building to West Central Community Action, runs a head start for that. The twenty, the Child Care Board, um, would like to replace the, um, playground. I've mentioned that before and WCCA does not want to have, uh, put any money towards that. And so what the Child Care Board came up with was why don't you ask the twenty-eight E Board what they think about dividing the playground in half? And Jim had someone from State Command to measure everything to make sure they had a playground that'd be big enough to house the number of students they have and half of it wood. And so they thought, well, if we're gonna have to pay for a playground, this way we only have to do half of it. Head Start can have their half, we'll have our half and we'll fundraise to try to replace that half. And when they notified WCCA of that, WCCA came back and said, hey, looking at the original lease that we signed, you are responsible for all common areas. We think the playground is common area, therefore we can't be last. So that's kind of at a, I can pass, I guess, I'm kind of stuck in the middle, honest with you, is because I'm on the WCCA board and I'm on the twenty-eight E board. Um, so I just took the information that I got, sent it to Colin and said, hey, you read through this lease and you tell me what you think it is. Mike Bardon is chimed in and he said, hey, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think it says that. You know, WCCA has chimed in and said, I'm not an attorney, but this is what I think it says. Uh, so no one, uh, from the legal department hasn't looked at it yet, so I sent it over to Colin to see what he thinks. And when you talk about, I mean, I thought about this over the weekend, about government entities trying to work together is that the city is gonna replace a block away, they're gonna put in a brand new, right? They're replacing the kids castle.
They are.
It's a block away from where the Children's Imagination Station is. Is there something that they, we can do to work together to have it satisfy both of those? Now, can you walk the kids out the door and down a half a block to a new area instead of, you know, Children's Imagination Station spending however, between a hundred and two hundred thousand to replace that, did the city of Dennis spend a half a million to replace that? Can they come again or do something again?
I would think that all of the requirements as far as the ADA, uh, as far as the safety of what the, because that used to be a big deal, whether you put the wood chips and you had to switch it to a different, uh, so that the kids didn't get loose livers, things like that, that I would think it'd be the same for both of them.
I think if I remember right, when we were still on the board, Gene, they said something about having to have a fence around it because kids can squirt off quick.
Right.
So they had to have it fenced.
Certainly, the Children's Imagination Station is fenced, yes.
Yes.
I think that, and I don't know if the city will do that.
Well, you're, the, the liability is, you know, taking those kids out of that fenced area, crossing.
Exactly, right, right.
Over there and then do you have enough eyes to make sure that the one child who's kind of a wanderer, you know, um, is, is well taken care of, uh, and that whole liability of taking them out of that fence across the street.
Yeah, they know thirty years.
I, I know what you mean. I mean, government agents, where if you could go to the city and say, hey, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand on our own playground, we'll give two hundred thousand to you as long as you have a fence. I would think a fence wouldn't cost two hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah, but do you feel like there's more pushback, Craig, from West Central's board that they don't want to be involved or from the director itself?
I think from the director itself. I don't think it's, hasn't been brought to the board as an issue. It's just been with the director, it started the director, been the CCA and the finance person is who I have talked to specifically. And they're just, it doesn't, you know, they get some federal funds, so Davis Bacon is involved if through the bidding process, that has to be included and the bits that uh, Children's Imagination Station has gotten does not include Davis Bacon and so they need to see that. Um, WCCA only pays the vendor directly. They, so they wouldn't give like Children's Imagination Station, here's twenty-five grand towards a playground. Um, it has to be budgeted and spent the same budget year. And like I said, and they paid a vendor directly, so they have to pay who was ever building it, not Children's Imagination Station. And WCCA frankly has told me, hey, Craig, we've been burned before by putting money in a, in a playground of a building that we rent. And then it ends up either being sold or something happens and now we're out that money we can't get to it. So it's not something, and they foresee, uh, what they've been hearing from the federal is that the head start is possibly gonna be cut five hundred million dollar budget. Cut the federal government this year and so they're seeing that potentially.
Those.
Potentially being, hey, we need to be very cautious, kind of like we are with our funds because we're hearing realms that we might get our budget cut.
Craig, would they actually put a fence down the middle of it and show?
Yes, they would. Fence with a gate is what.
Fence with a gate.
Yep.
Which, you know, uh, it's nice having that big area for kids to run, you know, to really get there. Instead of kind of just like a backyard of being a little bit smaller and these kids or these kids and I just.
Right.
It does, it just, uh, it, it's best if we can work together, you know, and I understand their concern with still tax fair dollars at the end of the day. Uh, we have to do ours and what if they don't, what's their visa? So long as their visa.
I mean, the, the contract that I saw this, the original lease was signed in two thousand one. It was a five year contract, two thousand six, so I'm assuming it just updates every year. I didn't read that in there, but I'm assuming it just updates every year unless somebody, you know, gives some sort of notification because that's the only contract that I saw was dated two thousand one.
So is there a, like, you have to get thirty day notice and that just?
I, I said, I didn't see that in there, but I would assume that's in there.
Probably best to have legal counsel look that all over and uh, yeah.
So I kind of gave the background to Colin, sent him on, forwarded him the response I got from Wendy, who's the head of WCCA, and then forwarded him the response I got from Mike Bardon. And well, Colin, I said, I'd just be interested to see what you, um, what your thought process is after you read through it. So.
What have you got?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Well, didn't have a lot on me there, so I do have a conservation board meeting about nine, at four fifty. Uh, four forty-five. Four fifty, that gives Mary time to leave here, stop at home, grab a couple beers or something.
I would.
Is it on the agenda to talk about Nelson's partner?
You know, I don't, I mean.
Just kind of keep that in a, you know.
Yeah, I can bring it up under the public forum.
I think that would be good to kind of make sure we're all on the same page of what we think is happening down there. They only give those folks that are concerned an update.
Yep. And uh, Jerry Bruce Junior contacted me Thursday or Friday last week, want to know what we're doing with the farm we got. And he wasn't upset by no means. He just said, I don't, I don't get the paper anymore and I don't look at the county website. And I said, well, we're kind of thinking about going a whole different route of maybe putting it into a conservation deal. And he said, oh, I'm fine with that, but if you want to rent it out, just at least let me know. He's still interested. He's still interested, so. So with that, then I called K R Buck and said, where are we at? He said, well, this is where we need to get ahold of the FSA office. And Erica Schekinger was out on vacation, so I'm gonna call her this afternoon and see if she can get her proposal put together on what, what income would be generated off that. K R thought it might be the more than what we're getting for cash rent. Just throw in a dog, but. And I think we probably should get Eric in here to update us on that or at least a couple of us get together with her. You know, kind of. And we'll see where we're at with that.
We have a letter of termination sent out.
Yeah, that was sent. Yep, that was sent.
It was early August.
Yeah, right. So we're, we're, we're working in the timeframe we need to be working in here, so. I'll get ahold of her and see what she can put together and let you know, we're on we.
And if we don't get anything decided at this time with Erica or coffee, you know, K R or that, there's nothing to turn around and have another rent auction come December.
Right, no, we can still do that, yeah. Well, I think we're, our timeframe, we're kind of, we're good as long as we keep moving on it.
Yeah.
And I just was thinking after, we had a phone line that was laying on the road ditch and I was getting moved from the road ditch into our field and we did it with a disc or something and the frontier would come back all the way, another phone line down there. Finally took a phone call the Iowa Utility Board and it was a matter of a week to have that thing buried. We've been fighting for like five years. So I wonder with all the phone line problems that we, we're having here in Crawford County.
The courthouse.
Is it just the courthouse? I think it's, I think it's probably telling why, I'm guessing.
Wouldn't that, were there outlines? Well, I take that back. I didn't have a landline, so we were talking about calling after the summer.
Right. Yeah, I say a lot of houses don't use landlines anymore.
So I have nothing to say about.
I mean, the only thing you use in your house now is fiber cable, fiber optic.
Well, we got rid of bars just because it was staticky and you couldn't hear nothing and it.
It's crappy. Yeah. I mean, eastern side of the county, they're getting all in fire. It seems like it's the veilish and then it stops.
Western side of Crawford, like the western side of the state.
Yeah. I don't know. Do we need to? I don't know, but just thought if I do any good, do drop a letter to the I U B saying.
We're having issues with our, I don't know. Is there something they can do about that? I guess that'd be.
Maybe should we talk to Jake?
Yeah, that's their, uh, yeah.
Well, knowing that, when I heard.
When they say is private sector, find another one, another company or a.
I don't think we get that there. I think they've got kind of like sovereign domain over here, don't they? Isn't that one of the reasons?
Yours is like the only player in the game in western Crawford County. There is nobody else. But we're not the only ones that have it. I heard half the state of Nebraska without nine one one service. Last week, Kim, Thursday, Friday, like right after Nebraska got beat Thursday night. That's a true story, the nine one one service.
Why are we laughing?
But they, they pinned the contract, they had a fiber optic line somewhere and knocked out half the state of Nebraska, including Douglas County, which the city won on. So, yeah.
That's a big issue.
So, see, Ty, just briefly, I just wanted to say that, uh, our third judicial district department corrections, we were scheduled to be in for September eighth, that's been canceled. And so Maureen has mentioned that she was going to still continue. Drew, I think I mentioned a couple of months ago, she was gonna come by. And so, uh, I put in an email to her as to when she'd like to come, because I know she's already visited about five counties. I would assume that in September she'll be.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks. That's all you had, Cal?
Anyway, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Osmond, good morning. How are you, sir?
Good.
Welcome to the party.
Stopped down, tie up words and.
Need some scrap blood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good chance.
We can do that.
Paul, I gotta see Tom over the weekend. He said, make sure you tell Paul hello from me.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Can do that.
Yeah, we're the both, we're the great Harrison area. Well, hopefully everybody had a good weekend. Nice weather. Busy, busy, yeah. Uh, the, uh, bridge is going on very well. All the piling is driven, both of those.
On the Rickens?
Yeah, on the Rickens Bridge, yeah. So they're forming up for the base. So there's a piling driven in, there'll be a footing. And then on top of the footing, they'll build the wall. So it'll probably be pouring that here in the next couple of days, the footing. And they'll be working up, putting all the steel in and the wall will be two pores. It'll be just like three feet from the top. Because they have to get in there and get the concrete in, so they're gonna be pumping it, so they're gonna have this hose. They gotta get underneath of there and actually be able to vibrate, consolidate, do all that good stuff. And then they'll finish up. The last three feet will be like a separate pore and try to get everything up underneath of there like it's supposed to be, so. Yeah.
Free timeframe, you, three weeks.
You know, we got the. They'll, they'll, they'll have by late next week. I think if everything would go well, the steel's all there. They could be ready to do the second pour. And then a few days after that, the third pour. And then that'll all be in place, but that's gonna have to cure because it's a structural element, but they could still be working on the approach labs.
Yeah.
They just can't put anything on the bridge. They could still be working on the approach labs. They could be doing shaping and, you know. They just can't put anything on the bridge. They could still be working on the approach labs. They could be doing shaping and, you know, uh, channel work. At which we can still use the bridge, you know, as long as, so, but they could be working on the approach labs, especially the south side. So. Um, and I hate to give it eight.
Correct. We were trying that before.
But it's going well. I would say at this point.
Good.
So once you get that footing poured, get up, then, you know, even without the change, you start to rain or about it, but. You know.
Oh, I think twenty eighth of February.
A long time. I'll never forget that reconstruction path, sitting there with Dan Gray. I mean, they were just, they were gung ho. Let's get to work.
Yep.
I mean, I was. This is got to do a ribbon cutting on the fourth of July. It is.
Maybe the fourth of October.
But it's going well, so.
Have all the main party out there.
It does, you know, when you get to a certain point in life, you realize that. That's happened, you know, when you're young. It always does.
And if it don't, we're not going to worry about.
Every quick fix is one broken bone away from a three day ordeal.
Yeah, and, and every time something like this happens, it's a learning opportunity for everybody, you know, I mean, uh.
And this will probably be studied.
Yeah, you know, I just kind of want to set aside to be honest with you. But it is, it's a learning opportunity and how you improve communication, how you improve a lot of things. And what you do, and we all know, I mean, all you guys know how important communication is. And how it can really be a problem if you don't communicate accurately and. Anyhow, so that's good news. Um, Manella Shop, uh, yeah, they're. Probably on October timeframe, but yes, to get started on footings, maybe later this month. So I've had inquiries from some of the subcontractors about certain things. So I think it was good that we met there last week.
Yep.
I think that's going to work out good for everybody. So, uh, I sent the email out to Colin to work on, you know. Start the process of getting the deeds. Now, we don't want to really do a property swap until. You know, our building's done because we still got to use that unless we have some provisions in there to.
Can we start working on all the dirt and all?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we probably could, you know, if we wanted to, yeah, yeah. So, and I suspect it's going to be next spring sometime. It actually weren't great enough there on T L. People check there's a big time. That's where that dirt came from. We used to build pad, uh, there's some good soil in there. We just bring that in.
Yeah.
Do that also, but so. So, yeah, that's, uh, that worked out well. Good, um. The, uh, uh, great crew that down on Mill Ridge, uh. We'll, we'll go there and we're going to go down on three hundred street and see how we can do it. Finish the season up there. Uh, bridge crew, they're working on that rainbow trust just outside of Buck Grove. Actually, it's in Buck Grove. It's the one that goes to that private residence, but there, you know, there's a, there's an agreement. That stream kind of meandered through there. Okay. So they were able to eliminate two bridges, put one in. In exchange, you know, this was put in exchange for. The elimination of two other bridges. So, uh, there's a letter agreement that says we'll take care of it. You know.
I had one.
Does this one for seventy years.
Somebody say something they thought, maybe we were putting in a lot more bridges than we needed there. I don't think we really are.
Well. Twenty-four foot wide legal ridge. That's our standard. I mean, and so.
I think they were looking at the old rainbow trust, you know, and that was good enough for all the years.
Well, it was, but you can't get emergency vehicles over it. You can't get school buses over it. It's, you know, it's a good bridge for pedestrians, but it's just, uh. The slide and so we're using all use sixteen inch wheel beams. We don't have any other place for it. Uh, we have to put new age piling in, but that'll be, our bridge will be there a long, long time. And they don't have to worry about anything. So, you know, it's just one of those things. Um. Uh, the roadside crew are, that new tractor's out of the shop, um, and, uh. I don't know that anybody's running it just yet because they're kind of, they're in the old tractors, kind of huge one. So when they get done seeding, we'll probably put Maureen in the new one. And maybe he'll switch, kind of leave it up to you and hop in it. Uh, but we'll probably run three of them. Uh, we're going around at some of these Easter rows that we graded up, you know, the level Bs, trying to kind of. Keep them in a little nicer shape. We typically haven't owned those, but we're going to try to get into those and we'll run the three motors this fall. But it can get them all looking nice, so. Um, the air conditioner is in the shop. You know, so.
Way to make it sweat it out.
Yeah.
They're loving it.
Yeah, now it's going to cool down, but, uh.
I think you're still going to have them glass gap.
Like, I, you know, they finished up on Friday afternoon. And I was so excited because I thought I'd get down there this morning, you know, and they have their air conditioner on. I pull up. It's like, they, they didn't set it down over the weekend when they finished up. They, they, they got everything hooked up. They set it to eighty-five degree. So, uh, so anyhow, we closed the doors up. I said, Andy, they said, we got to do a test run here. We got to make sure, you know, see how this works. Supposed to get up eighty-eight this afternoon. So, uh, so we closed the doors down, fired it up, basically wants, you know, it'd be cooler.
Yeah.
But, you know, they're probably. Not going to use it all the time, but you get into that week like we just had where it's ninety-five degrees and the humidity is a hundred percent. That's miserable. We're working in a shop. I mean, any of you guys, you guys all know that, so. So it's trying to keep your, your, your employees who do a lot for us in a little better environment.
What do you call that, the six E?
Six E?
The doggy.
Oh, the doggy.
That's the first thing, when you said air conditioner, the first thing came to my mind.
I haven't heard anything on that, uh.
Still got a waterfall?
Oh, yeah. And we all left there last week. I told Brett, don't bring it back till it's fixed. And it isn't their fault. Brett's a great salesman. He's a great guy. And I told him, I said, Brett, this is nothing personal. This is business. We can't have a machine. I mean, literally, I don't have my phone with me, but the water is literally running out like a faucet. It was about a quarter of a minute. You know, you just can't have that, you know, we should.
But part of the reason we buy from Cat is because they service us.
It's because of what they do after they sell them. Yeah, yeah. And so this is a head scratcher for all of them. You know, and I mean, they, last winter, they put a whole new unit in it. Okay, I gotta believe it's something elementary, very basic.
They're missing something.
Somebody's just not seeing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So subtle, you just wouldn't.
Is just not seeing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and so. Honestly, I hope they load it up, take it to Peoria and have them just tear it apart and then just bring us a different one. I mean, seriously, I'd pay the difference. I mean, I wouldn't pay the difference on a new one, but some sort of a deal. Uh, I mean, we bought that for four seventy. They're like seven fifty now.
Oof.
Yeah, so.
Should have bought two right away. Even how much that'd be saving us.
Well, I mean, we have motor graders, motor graders, one four, three thirty to four fifty, you know.
Everyone we could get them for a hundred and a half.
Hundred and sixty-three, I think, when I first started.
We thought that was all.
Now, there was, we're, you know, we're buying different machines.
Right.
We're buying the all wheel drive. So.
But even at four seventy for the cat, for that dozer, you buy, you buy it to work though. You buy it that.
Well, imagine, imagine you spending five hundred thousand dollars on a brand new combine, which I don't know if you can get it for that now. And it, when you're running an air conditioner, when you start combining it, beings, all of a sudden water's pouring down and you have the headliner's also wet. It starts to stink. It's just. It's not acceptable. And it's never been right since the day we bought it. And so I finally just threw up my hand and said, we, we can't use it.
Everything but the air conditioner's been just ideal about that thing though.
It has been, yeah. This is a one.
Seven hundred and fifty for a new one.
You know, and we, we had a. We've got that motor, a motor reader up there now. It was Henry's, okay? And something very similar, you know, with that air conditioning, but, but a, a problem, it, it's steering problem. Okay, so all of a sudden it's, you know, and these are joystick. There's no steering wheel and it's just, it's, it's electronic over hydraulic. You get a joystick that's actuating an electronic, you know, impulse that actuates a solenoid that opens and shuts and steers you. And all of a sudden, you know, and then it runs fine for three or four weeks.
That's scary.
And nobody could figure it out. Nobody. And so, I mean, their tech was down here. We diagnosed it, diagnosed it. And finally here about three, four weeks ago, I, I said, we can't have this machine. It's, it's a liability and there's something wrong, clearly. So we hauled it up there. I said, don't bring it back till it's fixed. And it was a harness that was bad. Just couldn't, you know, they had to dig a little deeper to figure it out. That part's coming from Germany. It's supposed to be here last week. And then they'll bring that back. But, you know, I mean. These are very complicated machines with a lot of things going on and we have really good people, but sometimes it just gets deeper than. You know, you just got to. Could have.
That's why we have warranty.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, uh, another thing we, uh, we demoed last week, I don't know if I mentioned this to you or not, but it's a. It's what's called a G D two blade system. Okay, um, and their inserts, their carbide tipped inserts. That's really neat system. It's, that's a pin that goes in. You put a lynch pin in it and holds it. That's, that's, you know, the whole cutting edge is full of.
That's like Kurt's, that's what Kurt's running.
Yeah, and so, you know, and I tell the guys, you know, we continue to try to do better. Where do you get most of the salt cost from?
Gravel roads?
Gravel roads.
Over and on.
Gravel roads.
But other than the bridge, that's all I've ever.
That's right. I mean, you know, and if that bridge was the problem, that'd be all you have. And so, you know, you, you know, again, we had. Brian Jackson come do the three day training. We'll do some more again next year. I think that's just going to be an annual thing, you know, because we got new people coming and going. But we also are trying this new, uh, bit cutting edge system and, uh. You know, the, the guy came and, uh, from Sigler did a demo for him and we put him, the, the set we have is a demo set Kurt's got right now. Uh, we're in, uh, Charro, South of Charro. The guys were really impressed with, uh. So I think we're making some inroads, you know, that they, 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 for the most part, embrace the training, you know, somebody that's been bleeding for twenty-five years. This guy's saying, I know everything I need to do, but.
I could teach them.
But a lot of them are, are picking up and doing some of those things. And so, uh. I guess the point is we're trying to make improvements.
I was down in Manila.
Experiment with different things, so.
Down there to tower and it looked like they'd get, boy, he was digging deep on that shoulder.
They're pulling it in, yeah, they're pulling it in.
So I thought he would look like he was trying to apply that.
Yeah.
Training.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of glamorous stuff about gravel roads, okay, but they're the most important road to people to use them.
That's right. If you live out there, it's pretty damn.
It's important for, that's right, that's right. So, so we're continuing to try to improve on that. Um. The, uh, Highway fifty-nine detour. I sent you the email.
Yeah.
I want to push that button. Right there. The last time we did it.
I remember.
Disastrous.
I remember. That was when we came up to down in.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I responded to Shane and copied all of you all. Um, you know, at the end of the day, I mean. We all kind of tried to get along because sometimes we need a state highway for a detour. So, yeah. You want to cooperate, but that was disastrous because nobody uses the detour. Yeah, they're going to pick the gravel roads and then they're going to, you know, they're going to shoot down past, uh, you know, down your neck of the woods. They're going to, they're going to, um, wherever the locals are even.
And it's just more, I mean, it's more dangerous for the locals that are used to being out there.
And not.
Because they're not used to seeing that kind of traffic. For me, it was like, holy wow.
What's this, am I doing out here? And, and so.
I'm reading a couple times this summer.
Yeah, so I'm going to call Shane this morning and visit with him a little bit, but. I don't want to do it.
Tell him you're renting a work bridge.
Yeah, yeah, tip bridge, but yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know. Move it out, run them around, do a shoe fly.
Yeah.
And it's just, I mean, the headache and the pounding our roads take is, you know, I would let them use it for nothing. Really.
Well, it saves us that much.
They're building a home and bridge on Highway thirty or so and replaced the bridge by wood line.
Right, that's going to be closed pretty soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, they built a bridge around it.
Yeah.
And they're going to do one or they're going to build it, slide it over. I don't know for sure where.
Yeah, that's down there too.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, yeah, we're, you know, throw out some options here, um. You know, it's kind of interesting. I mean, it's that project's next year, which, uh. It's, I guess they just discovered that they're piling there, so, but, you know. Would be nice to have a little more advanced. We'll, we'll talk about it, so. You know, that's all I have.
Right.
I, uh, taking a little vacation next week, so I won't be here.
It's Tuesday. Should close the place down, so I won't be here.
I didn't party, what?
Gene, you keep going with that. Grab, don't trust me.
Do we have, we play between our, that's our hundred, three, there's that in our county.
I have a big block, um.
Send.
Right north of, right north of that bridge that we did. I think that's theirs.
The south quarter of.
Let's see, council, where are they going? Where's the new, because we put a new bridge in. Let's see, here's our avenue. Which we got here, our, right here. You just put that bridge in. And in that one, see that road, that was never supposed to count. That's the only county there. I know because.
Yeah, because I helped put that perfect bridge in. We had to go fix it.
Well, Graves, yeah, Graves built a new one, yeah, because they got people like, we, we agreed, we're never going to replace that. Well, they got some people waiting for it, so we replaced it. Uh, they graded up, I think it's this section of the road here. I'm pretty sure that's all in there. Just pretty sure, you know, it's.
All right, our bit of something we have, one of our field interests is right in Crawford County. And like I said, New Canaan, yeah.
But I.
Paul, you're right.
Well, we'll tell you.
It used to be rolling in.
Over the weekend, I had a number of people, we got talking, while we were campaigning for talking, hanging out. But a number of farmers said that. The dirt roads that we've reshaped, worked over the last how many years, we're so impressed. Our great crew, what we're doing, understood that, yes, this fuel goes higher and, you know, some of those could slow down, but just. I think wanted me to pass on you that they really appreciated those roads being worked over.
Yeah, we've had some good feedback too.
Yeah.
A, a number of people just stopped in just to make a point to say, hey, we really like what you're doing out there. Um, right now, to be honest with you, twenty twenty-four, I mean, it's just, it's hard to get people signed up.
Yeah.
And, you know, and so.
Speaking of that, I know that I, our new stretch, I know they did their chopping. So they had a bunch of hay and a bunch of silage wagons running on that.
You mean the seal goat.
Yeah, where we can assist.
Yeah.
And they stood up, stood up like a champ.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think that's something we can use more on?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's, I think it's a great option.
Three forty, that, down by Manella's one traveled back and forth between one forty-one and, you know, everyone black.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of roads that are kind of high volume, brown roads. Uh, you know, this was an experiment.
And we wanted to see how it holds up.
You know, so.
Lost the fact that prohibited.
The thing about the seal goat is so now what you have is you have twelve inches of, I call it, like that concrete.
Is it, is it like the fly ash or, you know, the.
Cement.
But it, it works the same as when you see the farmers that are putting out that stuff from the, from the coal plants.
Fly ash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Works kind of similar where it's really hard.
You could do a fly ash daylight save. That, that's what we did when we did the, uh, pavement down to Manella in fifty-five and fifty-three. And those were fly ash stabilized, eight inch fly ash stabilized, uh, fly ash is just getting harder to come by.
Yeah.
Okay, because of the. Uh, you know, issues and so, uh, so we just use cement. Bring your good old fashioned cement, dumped, uh, you know, we dumped the crushed limestone out first and we, you know, they measure out how many feet that load should go of cement. Level it out, blend it all in, then inject water as you're going. You know, we, we tested several times. We had, you know, oyster destiny test, where a company come out of Sioux City and tested. Uh, you know, so we're trying to track everything that was done there, you know, the quantities, you know, and all the, everything that we did. So that moving forward, you can kind of see how they perform over time. I might suspect this is going to be going on, you know. That'll be monitored for ten years, you know, or if they didn't.
That's just where I was going to ask, how do you? If it's something that you say, hey, we'd like to use that again.
Yeah.
How many years go by when you analyze, goes at year three, do we say, here's what I think is typical where here? And here's how this is, where we can do it instead of waiting the ten or twenty years.
Yeah, and we're not the first ones to do it. There's other people that have done so.
Washington County does quite a bit of a sound.
But, you know, for our soils in our area, you know, here's what we did and how it's going to perform. So, you know. Pretty, it's going to be pretty good, you know, it's kind of like a vehicle, what kind of gas punch will I get? Well, you got to drive it for five years before you really can know. But we know it's going to be in that range where we want it to perform. And so then you just, my point is, is. You monitor what you do in your own area, given the materials, the soils you have, the aggregates you have, and then you just say, oh, wow, this didn't really perform. Well, why not? Was it drainage? Was it the mixture that we used? Was it the proportioning that we used? Was it, you know, what was? Uh, is the characteristic of the traffic that travels on it? Cause all of those things play into how it's going to perform. So basically you got this, you know, this base and you guys remember when Mike and Tom were here, you know, they, they had talked to Harrison County. It was like sixty thousand dollars to do a mile of auto sale. Well, problem is, is that's okay, but you got to have something to support.
You don't have anything.
Because that's just a thin layer of oil with aggregate mix. And that's all that is. It's not going to carry anything. Because that's just a thin layer of oil with aggregate mix. And that's all that is. It's not gonna carry anything.
What did that, what did this cost us?
Well, this is gonna be that two hundred twenty five thousand mile range. It's a wider pavement than it is. It's wider than it was.
Per mile?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, if you went full.
Well, they, they were only supposed to go twenty six feet. I don't know how that got, you know, that's communication again. I talked to the guy, showed him, but it's supposed to only be twenty six feet. I haven't got the bill yet. So there'll be a little debate going on there, but it's wider than it's supposed to be. But it's nice. If anybody's driven it. It's really nice. You can land in there.
Yeah.
Did a great job.
Everybody that's been on it, I, I talked to Hartman. He went out there to drive on it.
Yeah.
And he said, wow, that's nice.
It is.
And he's cynical about everything. If he liked it, it's probably likable.
Yeah. So the other thing about seal code is that they're not maintenance free. Okay, you have to continue like Nelson Park Road, for instance, every three to four years you walk, you, you, you monitor that annually. In the spring, you look to see if there's any start, you know, because if a seal code starts to fail, it's gonna go really quick. If you see it, it's too late.
You should know that, Ty.
Yeah, we know that, no way.
You dress it every day?
That's what I said. If this works up, that Kyle even brought it up. We should have the charter oak do our stretch goes up past the bus barn and the, on our fairground thing there.
Now, you know, a lot of people are donated. We went twelve. Okay, but you gotta have some structure there to carry the load. That's your, that's your structure. The seal code has given you a desperate service.
But we, we gotta put rock on every year now.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, basically you're, you're actually gonna able to skip a year or two before you have to do maintenance to it again.
Yeah.
So our costs, I mean, I think if you start evaluating your costs, as long as that holds up structurally.
Yeah.
This is a way to go. I thought Washington County, you need to talk to your engineer down there, cause I'm pretty sure.
Real well.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure I was talking to one of their supervisors down there at ISAC. I mean, that, it sounds like they've got a lot of their roads are going to this.
They're not seal coating them though. They're doing a base one stabilization. They're actually experimenting with this per design, which kind of sound like snake oil and maybe a five gallon bucket for a quarter of a while. But, uh, seems a little light. That stuff's like five thousand dollars a bucket.
Oh, my gosh.
Crazy expensive too. So, but there, see, we were, we went down there. When we went to, to a bridge, there was a bridge deal up in. Yeah, we drove down and we were gonna rent theirs, remember?
Yeah, I remember that.
And we were gonna bring it over here. It was like logistics of that. It breaks down. I, I just got nervous. I thought, you know what? Let's just hire somebody who knows. This is the first time. And it worked great. These guys knew what they were doing. Uh, but they do a lot of, they bought an asphalt zipper, which is a big, big drum that's on the front of the big in loader. And then they have the water trucks, because you gotta have a tremendous amount of water. Okay, to, to do this, you have to have the capacity to get water, bring it out to the project, uh, inject it. Uh, but they're doing, they're doing a lot of that on their own. So that's a possibility, you know, is to just go ahead and get one.
Well, I mean, you know, we had talked about one of these days, we're gonna be caught up with the, with the roads that people want to do out there on the dirt. I mean, so you got a good, that's actually a very competent crew.
That could be doing those.
They could be doing something like that that actually starts to.
Yep.
Reduce more costs, you know, short term costs, long term.
Yep.
A lot less.
Long term savings.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, we're, we're experimenting with different things. Continue to try to look at different ways to keep those gravel roads in better shape. I appreciate all of those things. Uh, guard rail had a vehicle hit the guard rail on abandoned ruin, bridge over there in Nelson Park Road, bridge over in the foyer. Ended up on the top, down in a river and.
Oh, shoot.
Walked away.
Lucky. Some days it's better to be lucky than smart.
But the guard rails are going with their tendency to do. If you hit that direct impact, you're probably, you know, went through the windshield. This is diverting the vehicle, unfortunately. Survivors. Um, and then, uh, had a tremendous amount of sign damage here the last couple of weeks.
Choice of vandalism.
Just you name it, over and.
Had it gently speaking. Oh, and dinner on Friday.
It is. Yeah, we have our suspicions, but anyhow, I've turned it all over to law enforcement. I did it with Stanny this morning. I just said, you know, we need to do a crime stopper thing on this. Get the word out. I mean, there's fifteen to twenty signs.
Especially when they're stop signs.
Old loan, they tore them down.
Is this a college thing again where?
I've been here, it's my twenty fourth year, every year in the spring, every year in the fall. It happens. Okay, it has every year. This is a little more than normal. And we had this happen a few years back too, where we had, uh, you know, just, uh, senseless. It's, it's just really senseless.
What road do they get out of that?
So.
I don't think they realize, I don't think they think so far down the road, they realize, all right, you're at the stop sign now, now somebody blasts through it and another one, you know. Right. And who's liable for that? Right? You get caught with that stop sign. I'm gonna tell you who's I think's liable for it.
Yeah. So. Put them back up and hope for the best. And hopefully we can find out who's the.
How much does that, you think that's like for this particular, I mean, what's that cost us to replace all?
Several thousand dollars by the time put the equipment, labor and all the other stuff into it.
Like, kind of behooves our farmers to keep an eye out.
Yeah, well, we found out who did the ones earlier in the spring. They paid for it. So.
Hey, what the, the access the overweight heavy twelve percent permits, you're homeless or do we need credit?
We're, we're still opted out and.
When does that?
You know, the conference I was at, well, ISAC, they're conflicting because I, I, Scott Knibauer, who's the office of bridges and structures, I've known Scott for a long time. He's really good. But he stood up to me and said, hey, this is affected today. You know, they can haul the twelve percent. Well, then.
Whether we're opted in or out.
Engineers, yeah, have said, no, you, you know, it's not till July first of twenty twenty five. And, uh, yeah. And that's what I told people. I said, hey, you, you wanna act as though it is in place. Get your bridges rated, because that's really, that's really what.
Get them.
Is the liability to a county is to have your bridges evaluated. Um, I don't know that there's a lot of people in this area that are buying those permits.
Yet.
Yet. I don't, I, I, I don't really know for sure, but I haven't heard of a lot of.
I've had some questions. I've had a few questions.
Yeah. But anyhow, point is, we're getting ours evaluated. And we'll have to put postings up for whatever.
Well, that'd be pretty obvious.
Support the twelve percent overload. I don't think it's gonna be a huge amount of bridges for us. There'll be a handful.
Can we send the bill to, to the governor's office for?
Uh, yeah.
We should.
You know, it.
Be why we have over three point or three point nine five.
You know, and I think, you know, Ty, you know, you, you, you guys read ISAC and the proposal to maybe have that, have that in effect. Uh, you know, say on rural county roads, nine months out here, January, February, March, and maybe part of April.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be allowed to do it. There's no point in them to haul that load out on these roads during that.
I sent that up down to Lucas yesterday.
Yeah.
Weekend.
And so I had, you know, if you wanna do anything to kind of help ease this, advocate that, we'll still have to post the bridges. But, you know, then everybody gets a little something of what they might want, you know? All those contractors, whoever wants to haul that load during the other nine months can, but just keep them off of these roads.
Yeah.
There's no point.
The crazy thing to me though, is we get allowed or the state allowed twelve percent overloads for commercial business, commercial trucking. Farm to market is A, farm to market. Now we're allowing commercial hauler to beat up our roads that are meant to haul.
Yeah.
Rain, livestock, B.
Well, the interesting thing is, is that, you know, Senator says, well, you know, we're trying to get away from the annual governor's proclamation. But that's not the problem.
No, not at all.
Here's the motion I made and the supervisors all supported. And there wasn't a single no on there.
No, there was.
I moved to propose an amendment to limit the timeframe in which the all systems overweight permit would be allowed. The proposal would exclude the twelve percent overage permit from the first day of January until the fifteenth day of April. Now, that's what the supervisor, I mean, that would be what the legislature decided, but it'd be different, but.
Yeah, you know, it really has to come from the local people, the local advocates. And, you know, there's probably not, hardly any farmers would argue that. They don't wanna be dragging that extra weight around in their semis on these roads that time of year.
Exactly, you're right.
But to me, Paul, when our local legislator says they wanna get away from the proclamation means that there's a disconnect that they don't understand that the proclamation actually works. That's what we want.
That's what you said back here. It does work. And no one really had a problem with that. And the reason was it was for a specific truck, the five axle semi tractor trailer, which a lot of farmers have. They didn't have to pay anything. They could just haul up to ninety thousand pounds during that. Just, you know, when they started to expand it, that got a little awkward. But having it just in the fall for harvest, truly for harvest, was okay. Nobody really had a problem with that.
Well, what really, what really disappointed me is when I, when I was down there at the freight advisory and I asked the state DOT guy that comes up and speaks and tells them. And he talked about the all systems permit. He got up there and I, and I asked the question. I said, can you tell me where we got the data from? That made this an acceptable. Basically wear and tear on our, on our roads networks? I mean, what, what, what was your data to say that this would be okay and wasn't gonna start making a lot of early damage to the road? And he says, well, it's, we're just using the same one that the farmer or that the governor did for the farmer. I said, well, where'd you get the data for that?
See, there, there is none.
There is no data.
There is none, Ty. This is all purely.
Political.
Politically motivated to say, hey, we, we need, we need an even playing field for other industries other than just A. Yeah. So, uh, problem was is that they never allowed discussion from the supervisor's affiliate.
Yeah.
Had you guys, somebody here been, or your supervisor represented, been invited to speak. Had engineers had some meaningful discussion to at least offer up some sort of compliment. It never happens.
Yeah.
Not, it didn't with the special haul vehicles. It didn't with this twelve percent. You know why?
They don't want it.
They don't want to hear us.
Yeah. And I hate this.
Well, they knew what we were gonna say.
Paul, we, I've heard this too from different legislators. Well, ISAC never said nothing.
Well.
Well.
Uh, they, they, they were a bit timid, I'd be honest with you.
They weren't.
They were, they were, they were.
Now that we said stuff.
The comment, the comment I heard is we don't wanna offend anybody. And so that's a problem.
That is a problem. But, you know, the engineering's affiliate, or they, you know, the supervisor's affiliate, we weren't at a table.
Yeah, no. I was told we don't wanna offend anybody and we need to support this. And you know how far we got with the special haul vehicle?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I was told at that point in time by somebody up in the DOT is that, you know, this is not a good course of action to take. Basically told to stand down, which I think is unfortunate, uh, because, you know, it hurts us out here.
Right.
Okay, and Iowa lives and breathes agriculture. Without agriculture, there's nothing here. That's where we are.
But, I mean, it's just like the, the feed companies calling you in the spring and that they're hauling half loads because they know that it's damaging the roads.
They're being, they're being good stewards.
Exactly. And I mean, that's all we're asking for here in this.
So, you know, you get collectively, you get the people, the, the soybean association, the corn growers association, you get the livestock growers association. You gotta guarantee you none of them were advocating for this. They're, they're falling on the coattails and saying, hey, well, you know what? Hey, they did it. So let's just go. But I guarantee you, none of those were in there lobbying for this.
I mean, far, I can't even imagine this farm real thought this was a good idea.
Yeah.
I like hearing that.
So, you know, I, I mean.
All the article turned around.
Have ever been in a semi electric vehicle in those months to see what it really does.
Why was sending pictures to our legislators? This is spring thawing was taking place when this is being debated.
I, I put that in here for Lucas to put in there.
You know, it's bad enough the way it is.
For the primary reason, I put, just put in there that it's unstable service and subgrids during thawing. Access weight and traffic during this time increases cost due to road damage. Concurrently, this, as this is the season for frost to come out, it is also the time where construction work is minimal to none.
Yeah.
Unless, unless travel on our secondary roads is advisable to preserve overall condition of our road networks. I would have thought January a safe month. I would have thought January a safe month, but the year twenty three demonstrated that we, that we can have substantial periods of thawing in this timeframe as well. So that's why I put January first in.
There's, there's just.
This year, we learned something.
There's, yeah.
And then that safety aspect on top of it as well.
Yeah, there's just no compelling argument to allow those heavier loads during that time of the year. None.
I mean, they're not working on the roads. I mean, you know, seven, if ninety thousand isn't enough, you know, if you're legally set to haul in ninety thousand or ninety six thousand, if that's not enough, I'm sorry. And, you know, that's, that, uh, we already looked at the numbers. That's not doing more damage to our roads and bridges. That's actually doing less. I mean, as long as you're, as long as you're in a legal configuration.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, you know, and the only way to make change is to. Yeah, try to inform people better for, um, we're right now having our bridges rated. We're gonna put the signs up.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, because it's not gonna be completely abolished. It's not gonna change. Uh, but I think a good compromise is what you, you proposed there, Ty. And so that's where we're at. And, you know, the bridges are one thing. My opinion, the roads are a bigger concern.
Well, I liked how Jamie and Lucas got right in behind this. So now we actually got something.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, I mean, if you need any assistance or background or.
I already used your name, buddy.
Yeah. No, I, you know. What you do, so you, 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 you just throw out, you know, you make your best case. That's all you can do. Uh, but I think there is a good argument to support that, you know, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Have a good vacation.
Thank you. Yeah, enjoy your time, Ma. Got you. Okay.
Oh, take one.
Take one and pass it up. It's complicated.
All right, next up on the agenda is this set time, date. Location for public hearing for budget amendment. Twenty, FY twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four.
Yeah, so it's the highlighted items. I'm gonna, um, so in the general fund, it shows the attorney and the assistant county attorney's salary that requires an amendment. The one below that is the, the rooftop units with, uh, carol control. I thought he said it would be quite a while. So I'm gonna double check with him on the timeframe. This may or may not need to be included in that. And we have that, the forty two thousand dollars in revenue from our insurance claim to support that. So, you know, um, the general supplemental fund is, um, my department and it's those voting machines. We did an amendment last spring for those, but we never, we didn't get the claim. We didn't get the invoice at that time. And I can't remember, they weren't delivered till June. So we did not get the invoice in time to be able to pay that.
Also didn't get paid.
Didn't get paid.
But it rolled over, so the money's in there.
Yeah, the money's there. We just need, I just don't have the spending authority. I didn't.
Okay, makes sense.
There's no roadside, no, um, I already checked with Paul. Um, the next county attorney is, um, that attorney collection fund. They have, um, almost five thousand in that fund balance. And, um, he's been spending a little bit of it. And he didn't budget any spending in that. I don't know why.
Spending authority.
Yeah, he needs that. So there are funds, um, in that fund balance to support that. I have a question.
So, because we know that the budget's the only thing that we ever get questioned or asked about, what are those funds being spent for? What's that like?
I don't know what.
Does it matter to anybody?
Does it matter to anybody?
Who's spending that money on?
It should matter to him. He's the one that should know what that is allowed, what the allowable spending is on that.
Or what would that be?
Yeah.
Well, he's made it clear to us that if we approve the budget, it don't matter what he spends.
I'm wondering why this five thousand, knowing the past what worked. It's the only place.
Four, four, seven. The money's there.
But once again, I would wonder why we have.
But we already approved it in the budget. Why, why, why do we need an amendment?
He didn't budget for it.
Budgeted zero.
He didn't budget for spending, but he has started, yes, I can't remember how much he spent, but. I know, I agree.
Well, what do we do?
I agree.
There you go. If we don't ask the question.
I ask a lot of damn questions.
No, no, I didn't.
No, I know. I'm not yelling at you. I'm yelling at the whole process because it really frankly pisses me off.
Oh, I get it. I feel you.
I feel you. So that's why I ask.
Someone needs to ask, because I'm not asking him.
Is this?
How about that?
Well, that's what everybody's hoping.
Well, I understand that, but I get crucified every time I do.
Well, that's why I'm asking now.
That's your job. No, I mean, they shouldn't be about others. No, you should, they shouldn't be, uh.
Don't you think that this is the time?
That's your job to ask.
Supervisor, since this is the only time that we've been told over and over that we have any authority to do anything.
Well, go over there and see if somebody's over there come answer the question for us right now.
There you go.
Go get them. Please. Thank you, Jean.
And then that last. And then that last item is that opioid abatement fund. And that's those funds going to the Manning, uh, that, yeah, yeah. And it's the funds that were spent to support that training we also spent. So that's all inclusive in that. Fifty-one, it's about fifty-one thousand is what's going to, um, um, Taya. And her organization. It was like five or six thousand.
So that's just. That's just authority to spend that.
Yeah, that's to spend it, because we did not budget that. The spending of that, because we had no idea at that point when you were doing budgets, a little over a year or a little less.
So because we didn't budget specifically for that.
Right. We don't have the authority to spend it.
Go directly to that without running.
Comment? Thanks.
Yeah, we have to have the, the spending authority for it.
This is learning for us. This is just how we learn.
No, I know. I appreciate that.
So really.
I have to ask.
The attorney's first part for the assistant county attorney and difference for the building now repairs are really the only ones that are going to.
Right, and I'm gonna double check. Right.
And we, we agreed with Colin.
Yes, we did. I, I didn't question that, because I know exactly.
But like the voting machine, like you said, that was already budgeted for, that we just didn't spend it yet.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you don't ask the questions.
I understand that. I under, I completely.
I, I, I would assume sometime you feel like you're standing on an island alone.
Oh, yeah.
I, I get it. And, 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 you know, I mean, we're supposed to all be here to support each other, so we're gonna try to do that.
I'll let it meet you now. So we'll just get the answer to this and then I'll know.
I thought it was just gonna be a three hour tour.
Please join us. We had a question on what, what you're, uh, on this budget amendment for the five thousand dollars.
I don't remember submitting a budget amendment.
Well, you don't have spending authority and you're spending out of that fund.
Oh, my gosh. That's what it's for. I apologize. Yes, we don't have spending authority out of our, what was it? Was that our forfeiture or is that our collection?
Selections.
So we have county attorney collections. Uh, it's mandated by the state. You either have the collections for delinquent debt to the court through your county attorney's office. Or you have to have a twenty-eight E with someone else who does it. And like that county collects your delinquent debt and they skim off the top for hassle.
I think I remember you talking about.
So we have, we have our own county attorney collections fund. Uh, you sign up for it online if you're a defendant with delinquent fees. Um, and the state, of course, gets the, I think, close to eighty percent of it, if not more. And then we, and then we get the leftovers. Um, and, but we can spend it for enhancement of our office. Um, there's limits on what you can spend money on, or what you can spend the money on, kinda like forfeiture. It has to improve, uh, the function of the office. And we have five thousand dollars spending authority. I don't think we have five thousand dollars in it. But we have a five thousand dollar spending line.
Pretty close to five thousand.
Okay. And, uh, we can't spend out of it, because we don't, it's, uh, right now, it's just a a housing.
Right, we need to budget for it. So what goes into that fund from the collections has to be spent in a specific way.
Kinda like forfeiture, yes.
Because you collected them in that fund.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna use them for.
For enhancement of your office.
For my office. Yes. So we're buying things like, we bought Bluetooth, um, chips or, uh, ports, or I think they're actually just thumb drives that allow our desktop computers to have Bluetooth, because they didn't have Bluetooth before. Then we bought wireless earbuds so we could use our Bluetooth. Uh, otherwise, I have to kinda watch my videos tethered to my desktop, kind of like. Crooked. Um, what else are we spending out of? Um, we're gonna get a secondary remote monitor. Um, so when we work remote, uh, you know, all these desktops, at our desk, we have, I mean, two screens is common these days, but when we work from home, you just have the laptop. So we're gonna buy a floating, I only learned about this recently, you can buy a second just screen for laptop work. And so we're buying things like that, just kinda upgrade.
So it's basically for office.
Pretty much, we're buying office supplies with it.
Okay, we were just, we were wondering that, you know, and didn't want it to create any more controversy like we've had in the past.
Right. No, we already have the money there. This just allows us the authority to spend out of that line.
So in previous years, have you ever had budgeted money in that specific account?
Not, not to spend out of it. It's just, it's just been pooling up. I don't think we've ever, I mean, Terry, have we ever spent money out of that?
I can't tell you.
Oh. Yeah, I don't think we've ever spent money out of it.
Okay. All right. Well, we just, that was, that was what our question was. We just didn't want it to be.
Okay, well, sorry. Well, thank you.
What's that about? We've never done it before. So thank you for coming over.
Yep.
So is there any timeframe or timeline that we have to do the budget?
Yeah, I, I, I did a calendar and then it's, uh, I counted backwards from the calendar. So we will, um, if this is acceptable to the board, we will publish, um, next week. So we'll get it out to the papers, um, probably by Thursday or Friday, um, for publication.
So this, next Thursday or Friday?
Next Thursday and Friday.
Fourteenth or fifteenth?
Yeah, so that would allow for an amendment, a hearing on the twenty-sixth of September. So that would give us the ten and twenty days.
Okay. So you require. Set the time and date for no, no less than ten, no more than twenty, okay?
From the date of the hearing is when the publication has to happen.
Okay.
So what does the motion need to be?
The twenty-sixth. And then whatever time you.
Posted on the fourteenth and then we'll vote on it on the twenty-sixth.
That you're holding, have a hearing on.
Have a hearing.
You want ten AM?
It's entirely up to you.
Make a motion that we set the, uh, the date at September twenty-sixth, posted on the fourteenth at ten AM in the courthouse.
Sorry.
Motion was made on, on the budget amendment. By Ms. Hayden and second by Mr. Dozar. Get that all scribbled down there. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, cheers both sides. Okay, citizens input. Jake, I see you sitting there. You're gonna tell us that our phones are all fixed, right?
No, no, I'm sorry. I said. No, I came up here just, um, at your guys' convenience. I need to get ahold of your services, um, to do a software swap.
Want this?
Yep.
Oh, I'm good.
Yeah, you're good.
I'll be gone for a week.
I got home, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can take an hour or put in that next. That's kind of, I mean.
Okay.
Can back it out with my new chip.
So your name did come up earlier, uh-oh, about I U V. Yeah, uh, sometimes we need to, with our phone line situation. And we need to have our, I think I dropped a little phone call to I U V expressing our concerns and frustrations with our continued phone out. Which is in Crawford County, who was somebody in our four hours.
Right.
So I wondered if you'd be willing to get ahold of them.
Yep, I can do that and let them know.
Just let them know.
Kyle said he's had better luck contacting I U V with having results getting done than just contacting. Frontier don't really care, because they, they don't have enough manpower in the area to fix any of that.
More competition.
More competition. So, once the Iowa utility board gets involved, this seems like they're gonna light a fire or there's somebody that has.
Gets their attention.
Yeah, I mean, I can do that.
Please do.
Let's try it.
And then, um, but I, I, I'm gonna mention, and this is just, because we've been discussing in the IT committee, that's what the next meeting is about, is replacing the phone system and dropping the PRI, which is for infrastructure altogether.
Would still help our citizens if we tried to contact front, on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in, in the interim, absolutely.
They don't have nothing to do right now.
But I just, I've got plans to do something about that. So, but.
Okay, hey, thanks, Jake. He's missing his.
Okay. Fair enough, but like I said, at your convenience, it's a fifteen minute process. Um, replacing a remote control that's on this. And replacing by ride, um, the state's farming software that's free.
I'll stop by after lunch, check it up.
Feel free, I'll look at anything.
How mu, how long do you need until I can come pick it up?
Um.
Priority care.
Do this first. I'll pick up mine up next week.
All right, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
My, uh, my pickup's in a shop that's up on Jags.
I didn't see your pickup when I came. I'm like.
Zach will put new shirts. Zach, when you put new shoes on it, I haven't even been using my back bricks for years. I don't know, you know, without that bricks to have them on. Your caliper's been frozen up.
Did you have anything that you wanted to bring to the board to give it up today?
You know, I actually didn't have a whole lot, unless you guys might have to hear about something else. No, I actually don't.
I need that authority.
Give me, give me a breath. I don't really have anything that's, uh, you know, we can talked about it amongst everything else with people that told me about what I was. And I was, I was just happy that I actually had a couple that have actually already had very positive affirmations about the road. So that's, that's good. That thing holds up. That might be a money saver slash better roads slash people might call on us, because they got floppy. You know what I mean? That could be a real, real bad, a real bad. Anyway. I have nothing further. I had no meetings. All I have is my eyes and stuff. Uh, does anybody online have anything like they'd like to bring before the board? Thank you. Hearing nothing. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Dozar. He, he's traveling. He's running, get going.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, cheers both sides. Motion carried. Thank you for being here.